Good afternoon. I'd like to call our Calistoga Planning Commission meeting September 26, 2018. Roll call, please.
Noted for the record that all commissioners are in attendance.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for a pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Moving on to C, public comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the planning commission on items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The commission cannot consider any issue or take action on items raised during public comment. Anyone have anything they'd like to bring forward? See nothing? We'll move on to adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to, excuse me, to adopt the agenda as presented tonight?
So moved.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communications and correspondence?
None received since your packet was distributed.
Thank you. F, consent counter, minutes approval. Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, we're right there. Okay, so G, public hearings, municipal code amendment Z0RZOA 2018-3, consideration of a recommendation to the city council to amend the zoning code to clarify the applicability, excuse me, tonight, of lot areas and dimensions requirements in various zoning districts and to reformat certain chapters to improve their usability. Staff, you're up.
Thank you. As you recall during your consideration of the design of the application for the 1514 Washington Street Apartments project, members of the public asserted that the project could not be approved because the property did not meet the minimum lot area and lot dimension requirements for the R3 zoning district. And they specifically referred to a section that states that the following standards apply to development within the R3 district and after that statement are standards for minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and minimum lot depth. There is no language in the municipal code that expressly states that minimum lot area and dimensions apply only to subdivisions of land or lot line adjustments. However, the provision has been interpreted by staff and validated through decision-making bodies such as yourself to refer only to land subdivisions and lot line adjustments. The provisions have not been applied when property owners or applicants seek planning entitlements or building permits for existing lots that were lawfully created prior to adoption of the relevant zoning districts regulations. To interpret the code otherwise would preclude owners of a substantial number of lots in the city from any further development on their properties. So in order to clarify that this and these minimums don't need to be met for any further development of a property that is nonconforming in either terms of dimensions or lot area, we are proposing to amend eight zoning districts. This language shows up in eight zoning districts. It's not just exclusively in the R3 district. So we're trying to clarify the non-applicability of minimum lot area, lot width, or lot depth requirements to development on legally created properties. And what we're proposing to do is to create a separate section in each of these zoning districts that specifically has the minimum lot area, lot width, and lot depth standards and then have a wholly separate section as there is now that's called development standards. And that's where those requirements are living right now. So it's confusing. I mean, we, that's, you know, we totally understand why it would be confusing if you're strictly reading the language. So we're proposing to break out the lot area and lot dimensions as a separate section and then have all of the development standards such as setbacks, height, lot coverage, FAR, that kind of thing, keep them all together in a development standard section in each district. Now, I'd just like to reinforce the fact that no development standards would be altered as part of this proposed reformatting and rewording. We're just moving things around and one of the other things we wanted to do was keep all of the development standards in the same order in each zoning district. So when we're quickly trying to help somebody at the counter or on the phone or something, they're all in the same order, setbacks followed by height, followed by lot coverage, et cetera. So some of that is happening too. Attachment two, I tried to show exactly what's in each district now and how it would be reformatted to show that no development standards would be changing. And also to further clarify the non-applicability of the minimum lot area, lot width, and lot depth standards to future development on legal lots, we are suggesting that a section be added to the nonconforming chapter that says the minimum lot area and minimum lot dimensions prescribed for each zoning district apply to applications for new subdivisions and lot line adjustments. They do not apply to the development of a lot that has been legally created but does not meet the minimum requirements. What we're recommending is that you adopt a resolution recommending these amendments to the city council. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff before I open a public hearing?
I have, I don't know if this is so much of an observation or a question, but, you know, I know that, I think so much of the genesis of this is really semantics because we, you know, we typically talk about creating new subdivisions as land development and then we talk about building something on a lot as property development. And that's pretty easy to mix up. And so I wonder in the language that you've used is if we can be sort of more precise to try to bifurcate those issues. And I'm, and I'm, I guess my one suggestion would be in the, when you are creating a subdividing land, either subdividing land into different types of lots or, or doing a lot split of some sort, you're not develop, you, we could get rid of the word development or developing and, and perhaps say that it's lot creation because really that's what you're doing is you're creating lots.
Well, the wording of each subsection called lot area and dimensions does not include any kind of reference to development.
Okay, good, good.
It specifically says minimum lot area and lot dimensions in the fill-in-the-blank district are as follows: minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum lot depth. It's a wholly separate section, does not refer to development. The subdivision itself is not development. It might result in development, but it could also just result in another parcel and be splitting off, you know, in existing structure.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any commissioners, any more questions? None?
Do you get legal help in drafting this?
No, I got to do this one all by myself.
I just had a comment. I just wanted to commend the members of the public who actually spent their valuable time digging into the zoning and code. And I think it's important to add clarity like we're doing moving forward to encourage this sort of participation because this is really the way to get things done. So I think it's very important to do that.
Yeah, I have to agree. I mean, we work with these things all day and you don't even think about it until somebody asks you about it. Well, no, it doesn't really, that, if we said it applied, you had to meet the minimum lot area and lot dimension standards, you wouldn't be allowed to add on to your house or construct anything on your property. That would be considered development, so.
And if you were to demolish something, you wouldn't be able to rebuild on any of those parcels at all.
Exactly, exactly.
They would need to remain empty.
That's important to notify people of that, too. What was the date of the regulations that were adopted?
Well, you know, that's, that's the hard thing that's, you know, really difficult to trace. It could have been there from, you know, original language, things, you know, the, the numbers change over time, but it's really hard to trace, you know, exactly when certain language was added. It could have been there all along. I really didn't spend a lot of time researching it because I don't believe that word was specifically inserted for that purpose. It's a kind of common language in a lot of zoning ordinances.
I was just going to say, did you do any checking of other, like St. Helena, for example, because this seems, in my professional experience, very common. It's, it's very familiar to me.
Yeah, I actually didn't need to because it's, that's how it's usually worded, but I just thought for clarity's sake, there's no point in having any confusion about it. So it just seems easiest to clean it up.
Great. This is a public hearing, so I will open it to the public. And anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. And please just give your name, if you would, please.
My name is Jeffrey Stambor and I live at 1406 Forster. And I appreciate the, you know, the desire to make this process and make the regulations a little more understandable. I mean, this was our, our biggest hurdle in forming an appeal was ten short days to understand code and architectural drawings to be able to present, you know, a worthwhile appeal. But, so, and obviously, we're here, the, the item under consideration is to clarify the applicability of lot area and dimension requirements. And as has been said, the current discussion is a direct result of community feedback on the proposed project for 1514 Washington that was approved by this planning commission in July. There were a number of aspects of the project that were not in compliance with current codes and the project was then subsequently sent back to planning for round two after being appealed in front of the city council. I would argue that in the case of the minimum lot area, the code is very clear, concise, and ambiguous in stating the requirements. The planning department and city manager contended that those requirements only pertained to future subdivision and continued to do so even though there was no way to identify the provision of the code where it existed. It was then explained that that minimum lot area was historically interpreted by staff to apply to pre-existing lots. So, but this staff interpretation is in effect, in effect, amending the code section and according to our legal advice is not authorized by law. It's very clear that none of the R3 lots on Fourth Street meet the minimum R3 requirements. And the addition of seventeen dash, or dot forty-four dot zero-six-zero is a very broad exception to the code and has some disturbing potential consequences in my mind. Do all the other code requirements, requirements need to be met? I think it's, it should be stated clearly or we're going to be back in the same position of allowing staff to interpret the code, which I think we would agree is not a desirable According to the nonconforming lot exception, all of the lots in question on Fourth Street could be developed with triplexes. In my mind, this isn't the look and feel that we want for Calistoga when given our mandate is to, to keep a small-town rural atmosphere. And I'm, I guess I'm curious, why, rather than change the code to allow the project on Four, at 1514 Washington to go forward, and really, I would consider, I think we should start calling that project a Fourth Street project because that's where all the door fronts are. But rather than change the code, why don't we require that all the projects meet the existing code? Maybe we should look at rezoning the lots in question, those six on, six lots on Fourth Street and two on Washington to rezone them to R1 to better fit the existing neighborhood. And regarding the resolution, so the, the first part of it where is the, the CMC implies that legally created lots cannot be developed if they don't meet the minimum lot area and dimension. Then if that's the case, why was the project at, at 1514 Washington approved in the first place even though it didn't comply? And given that these provisions have not been applied in the past, I mean, I don't think that that justifies continuing to do business in that manner. If we interpret the code otherwise would preclude owners of a substantial number of lots in the city from any further development. I, I'm curious what that substantial number of properties is when I think that when we talked about that, we came up with not even a handful of properties that would be applicable. And I guess lastly, I, I need to mention that, you know, personally, I was, I was offended by some of the condescending and dismissive attitude exhibited by some, some members of the commission at the July meeting. Please keep in mind that the planning commission and the planning department exist to represent the rights and interests of all the citizens of Calistoga. Thank you.
My name is Donna Higgins. I live at 1410 Fourth Street. I'm going to talk a little bit about the staff report and I'm going to refer to special lines if you want to look at them when I talk about them. So at the July 11 meeting, when Commissioner Wilks reminded us that the lot located at 1514 Washington Street had been zoned for 30 years as R3 and to be prepared for a multi founding project to come into the neighborhood. The residents of Fourth Street had researched, have researched the plans presented and filed an appeal to stop the project as approved by the planning commission. As one result of the appeal, we're here tonight to clarify municipal codes and their interpretation by staff. If you want to join me on lines 25 through 27, the staff report of minimum lot requirements state minimum lot provisions have not been applied in the past to building permits. The code as written was not enforced by planning and the city council should not be bound by prior staff interpretations that are at odds with clear and unambiguous language of the code. Go to lines 28 through 31 where it's a legal, states a legal conclusion regarding compensation to property owners. Absent of a formal written legal opinion from the city attorney, this statement is conjecture. A clear and concise legal opinion must be presented by the city attorney for both the planning commission to view and the elected city council members to consider. To include a legal conclusion in the staff report without the city attorney's legal opinion is short sighted. Join me on lines 33 through 35 regarding the intent of the city council in adopting the municipal code 1790-040 in 2014 at the bottom of the city plan is purely conjecture. Don't know that those discussions took place about lot subdivisions. Okay, so now we're going to get to the prox of it, 1744-060, code, nonconforming lots. So we're going to, we're going to change these lots, we're going to make them non, legal nonconforming lots. There will be no standard minimum lot sizes on all zoning within the city of Calistoga except for subdividing or lot line adjustment if this is adopted. If the minimum lot size requirement does not have to be met, what other codes do not have to be met? It has not been made clear. We just missed the lot size. What else will be, will the, will we be except from park, except from parking, yard setbacks, or height? R3 has a lot of zoning restrictions. So I'm speaking on R3 zoning. For example, an R3 lot that is now legally nonconforming and is quite a bit smaller than what's suggested if you subdivide or put a lot line, if the owner of that property tries to meet all the other R3 code development standards, the city could be open to litigation, just as it suggested was open to litigation here where you cannot stop property owners from developing, developing property in their zones. So if you're going to make a conception that you're going to shrink the lot size, are you going to shrink the parking requirements? Are you going to shrink setback requirements? And I think this is, opens up a big issue here. So if, for example, if I have a R3 lot and, oh, I can't fit parking, I, but I have an R3 lot and I have a legal conforming, I'm, I'm going to sue you because I can't, you can't stop me from further development as referred to on line 28 of this staff report. The city cannot lawfully prohibit further development on a legally created lot without providing some form of compensation to the property owner. If question. Clear language must be included to guarantee all municipal code standards must be met when developing these nonconforming legal lots. Otherwise, it leaves codes open to staff interpretation, which brings us back to the same position we are in now. The goal for the municipal code is to be clear and concise. Now, I'm going to speak on Fourth Street specifically, and you have a nice chart, page two. The most recent development activity on Fourth Street has been to convert two existing duplexes to single-family homes and the building of a single-family home on a vacant lot. The chart on page two shows in the staff report notes, there are six lots along street fringes that are zoned R3 that have had single-family homes on them for many years. Perhaps this east side of Fourth Street should be rezoned to R1 to match the west side of Fourth Street to achieve consistency with the general plan goal of preserving the small-town character of Calistoga. And one side note, I really want to thank Ben Goldberg for answering all my questions every time I came into City Council. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak before I close public hearing? Okay, seen none. I will close it and reserve the right to open it if necessary. Did staff want to respond to some of these concerns?
Okay, just a couple of responses. When I met with Mr. Stambor and Mr. Higgins, Ms. Higgins, sorry, we were discussing how many R3 zoned properties could be further subdivided and, and Mr. Stambor was correct that there was only a handful of R3 zoning, zoned properties that could be further subdivided, but that we were just talking about R3. In the case of any other, you know, the other seven zoning districts, there are, of course, many properties that could be further subdivided. So this was, it wouldn't just apply to a handful of properties. It would preclude further development on many lots within particularly the older portion of the town, namely the downtown, the downtown core, which there's all kinds of varying lot sizes on Cedar, Myrtle, and all the cross streets. So in the more modern parts of town, the subdivisions such as Palisades subdivision, et cetera, those were developed in accordance with the, with the design code, so those would be compliant, but many of the older lots are nonconforming for one reason, either lot area, lot width, or lot depth, or all three of them. As Ms. Higgins pointed out, if there is a concern that people are going to try to develop multifamily on those lots on Fourth Street, then it's entirely proper for them to approach the planning commission and/or the city council about initiating a rezoning of those properties. The R3 zoning has been in place for a long time. It was to encourage multifamily development in proximity to the downtown, within walking distance of services, the schools. But if, you know, circumstances have changed, there could be a consideration for those lots to be rezoned to R1. The legalese that's at the top of the second page is in fact from the city attorney. That's why it sounds so legaleazy. I don't write that way. So she was basically of the opinion that if we were to preclude development on any particular lot, flat-out preclude it because it didn't meet one of the minimum lot area or dimension standards that that could be subject to a taking and we would have to compensate for that. I believe it's very evident that all the other development requirements in the zoning district, which are now clearly called development standards, and it says it applies to development in the district. So it says the following standards apply to development within the fill-in-the-blank district. Minimum setbacks, minimum, you know, height, minimum lot coverage. So I think that's very clear for each district and there is a variance process that can be gone through if they want to reduce that or if they, as you know, qualify for a density bonus, they can ask for certain parking reductions, height increase, lot coverage increase as required by state law in order to promote affordable housing. I don't think it's necessary to add language in the nonconforming section that all the other development standards apply. I think that's pretty straightforward. If, you know, I could work on the wording of the second, second, second sentence under nonconforming laws to say these requirements are not intended to preclude development of a lot that has been legally created and otherwise meets the minimum development standards except as otherwise provided or something because like I said, you can always get a variance or there's another way to reduce some standards. So I can tighten up that second sentence if, if it makes it sound like it's wide open that if you have a legal nonconforming lot, anything goes and, you know, we can't prevent it or else we'll have to pay you. So that certainly wasn't the intent and I can tighten up that language a little bit if that's the pleasure of the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Well, just one observation. I, the, I think that the way that you've set this up is clear that, that if, you know, if you wish to develop, this goes back to my semantic issue, if you wish to develop on a property, meaning you want to build a building, and it is an existing nonconforming, let's say it's R3, but it could be another zone also, the, the standards that you need to build to are not being changed by this clarification. It is what it's always been and, and any standard in the city on any zone in anything that you build, residential or commercial or anything else, always has the opportunity if you have cause to ask for a variance. The state of California sets the standards for what the variance needs. They set the threshold for, for the findings that you have to meet in order to be granted a variance. So it's not something that the city creates, it's given to us through the MAP Act and, and every time a variance is granted, we need to meet the threshold of those findings. If we can't meet that threshold, we can't approve the variance. So, so Mr. Stambor's comment about what will happen or, or Donna's standards, comments about if we want less parking or something, that's, that's not something that is allowed in this clarification document. That's, none of those things will change. So I, I know that, again, it's difficult to separate where do this land development issues come in and where does the, the issues of building a building on a lot come in, but none of the standards are actually being changed. They're actually just being clarified as to the way they've always been applied. And, and then the only thing I would say to both of you as going forward is that if you, if the desire is to make Fourth Street all R1 zoning, there's two avenues you have. One, of course, is every 10 years we have a general plan review. I mentioned to you in the first hearing that those slots have been zoned for about 30, 30 years. I was incorrect. They've been zoned that way for 36 years. So, so that means that you've been through four general plan cycles already and apparently no one's said anything. But the other avenue that you would have is that if all of the property owners who have properties that are R3 zoned, if you wish to get together and apply to the city and say, "We want to downzone our properties," you have an ability to do that. It's not, the city isn't going to impose it on you, but if that's your desire, you have an avenue to pursue that.
Could I also mention that the general plan specifies how many dwelling units are allowed? They specify the density for each of the residential land use designations. So nobody is entitled to two or three or four or five units on a particular piece of property. There's a range of densities that are allowed in each of the low, the medium, and the high density residential. So you have to apply. You also have to keep in mind the density range of the general plan. So even if you somehow were able to meet all of the development standards of the zoning district, we would also look at how many units are allowed on that lot by the general plan's density for that land use designation.
Any other commissioners, any questions?
I think one of the things that I think is important that I don't want to not say is, well, I understand that this is a clarification of the existing, existing code to make it more accurate and to reflect what's already been happening and is what is standard practice elsewhere and, but if what you're asking for is something different than this or different interpretation than this, I think it's important to note that these, these nonconforming addresses, if something should happen to any of those buildings, if a fire or there were earthquake damage or something happened to them, they're nonconforming. If we were to change the, the language to go the other direction... If we were to change the language to go the other direction, development would not be allowed on those lots. They would remain empty. It's...
Well, we do have a provision that allows non-conforming structures to be reconstructed if they are demolished.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner, 180 days, right.
Exactly. I guess I'm concerned about not proceeding with this information because of what it could mean for all the existing non-conforming lots in the area if an interpretation was to go the other way.
Okay.
I just wonder, I think we, I understand what we need to clarify here, but I just wonder if we could help give legal advice because the words are so important to get precise this time.
Well, the language was actually run by the city attorney, but like I said, I thought you were referring to the very, you know, the resolution itself and that kind of thing. But the whole concept of it was run by the city attorney.
Including the resolution?
Not the resolution itself, but that was...
But the language and the text?
Yes.
That was run through?
Right.
But I think it might be helpful to look at that resolution, too. I'll see some things that might jump out at you.
And I would say that common sense is not universal, which is why, of course, we have these codes to work with. And appreciate the public scrutiny. I think it's a wonderful thing. And moving forward, I want to encourage every single person in the community to learn from this and to realize you can make a difference by digging down into these various things. And the way you say does matter to us and we do take action. It may not be exactly the action that you want all the time, but we do listen and it does matter as well. I like the direction we're going and I think we need to continue that way and we just need to have our ears open to what our fellow community members care about.
We'll back up half a step to Commissioner Abernathy's statement about, are you making a request?
Understood. But I do believe...
Are you happy with the language?
I'd be happy to, assuming you support the overall recommendations, I'd be happy to assure you that the ordinance that goes to the council is vetted by the city attorney.
Okay. Does that address your concerns, Commissioner? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Oh. Could you just come in the door? Oh, okay, I'll open a public hearing, sure, sure. I don't like denying public their voice.
Could you come up?
Absolutely. I'll give your name, but it's better if you give your name.
My name is Robert Higgins. I live at 1410 4th Street.
Thank you.
Two things, two questions I had. One was if the variance process is so easy to obtain, why don't we just apply that to the lot size and not change the lot size law? Why not just let anybody who wants to put a piece of property that doesn't conform apply for a variance? Why are we changing the law?
I think you misunderstood me. The granting of a variance is not easy. It's not that it is easy. It's not easy.
Okay.
It's, again, the state gives us the rules by which we are allowed to grant a variance. And it basically is based on the fact that you have to be able to approve a severe hardship of some sort, given the nature of the property or something that's there. Sometimes, for instance, properties that have these very strange shapes, things like that, but it is not an easy threshold. So, what I was trying to explain is it's not an easy process.
Okay.
But nor is it a process in terms of the findings that's dictated by the city. It's given to us by the state of California. It's the same in every city in California.
Okay. And then, so the second thing was, on a 6,000-square-foot residential lot, Paul, you're in construction. You've been there for years. How do you build a three-unit apartment with six parking spaces and all the setbacks and all the open space without applying for a variance? So, aren't we, in essence, making these lots have to apply for variances in order to construct them?
Well, I can answer it from my perspective, but it probably isn't appropriate. I'll tell you why, because I live on an R3 lot and I'm not biased in any sense of the word. I mean, I go by whatever everybody else has. I think it would be definitely if the staff wants to clarify that for you, it would be, again, but from where I sit, you have rights, they've been established, they're there. You have lot coverages, you know, and I believe R3 is 40%, if I remember right. Okay? And so, you can't go more than that, but what can you put with that 40%? I mean, then we get into, that's why you come to the planning commission, is it appropriate? Does it fit? Does it work? Okay? Every project is different and I think Commissioner Wilks explained about the variances. You have to have something, it's a very high standard and you have to apply that. You have to be unique. You have to be different than pretty much the rest of, let's say, R3 or R1, whatever it is. You have to be definitely different and that you don't have basically the same right, you aren't able to get the same level as the other people that own R1 or R3 or whatever it is because of a certain circumstance that arises that says, well, it's kind of, in a way, I guess you're taking away from enjoying the same things that the other folks have in that zoning, whatever it is. So, that's the purpose of what Commissioner Wilks brought up. There is an ability to come to that level again if you can prove that you are unique.
I just add, Paul, that the zoning on the lot does not constitute a hardship. That would not be a recognized hardship. My lot is zoned R3. I want to be able to build something in excess of what can physically be put there. That doesn't constitute a hardship. So, under state law, we couldn't grant that variance.
Maybe I'm showing my ignorance, but I thought the minimum units on a R3 lot was three. So, on these residential lots, if you're stuck with a minimum size...
That's not a minimum. That's a maximum, I believe, isn't it?
No, it is multifamily. Could I, when you're finished?
No, I was just saying, if a three, how would you put a three unit on a 6,000-square-foot? How would you physically do it with driveways and six parking spaces? It couldn't be done. And so, we're making these lots have to apply for variance in order to do construction, which to me would seem like you're opening up the city to a lawsuit. I'll be quiet.
So, typically, a higher zoning, you know, a more intense zoning is applied to lower lots that are developed at lower density in order to encourage lot assemblage, so putting multiple lots together in order to put a multifamily development. So, that's probably what has occurred on a lot of, some of the lots in the downtown that are R3 and have apartment buildings on them. If you were to go back and research the underlying lots back, you know, through the ages, it's probably very likely that some of them were bought up by the same person and then put together and then a multifamily project was developed on it. So, this is really sort of an incentive. So, you have an R3 opportunity if your lot can support it. So, that's, you know, if you were able to put together multiple lots, you would be able to put a triplex on it.
But if you can't, then you wouldn't be able to build a triplex and you can't put a duplex and you can't put single-family. So, what do you do?
No, you can, well, you can replace single-family with single-family.
But what if you waited 180 days and you've got a lot now?
Yes.
R3. You couldn't do anything with that lot.
Right.
We could go on and on about this, but I would say...
No, but the point is the lawsuit, the lawsuit thing.
No, not necessarily.
That would open the city to a lawsuit as well, wouldn't it, if somebody can't build on their property?
I'm trying to respond to you.
Okay.
You're making the assumption that physically, on your hypothetical 6,000-foot lot with three units, that it physically cannot be done. I would say, well, as an architect, I can tell you, yes, it can be done, but they're not going to be very big units. But you could comply with the standard and that would be the standard that they would be met. It may be three studio units, who knows? But it actually can be done.
Yeah, physically, you could build a cracker box.
Yeah, your premise was physically it can't be done. And what I'm saying is your premise isn't necessarily correct.
Okay. So, as long as you aren't concerned with the liability on the part of the city if a person isn't allowed to build on their lot, except a small little, three small little units, if you don't think that's a problem, then we're okay.
But thank you. It's a good question, though. It's a good question, so I'm glad you did bring it up.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
I mean, if this fourplex...
Could you please state your name for the record?
Michael Nastari. I live at 1407 Washington Street. If this project at 1514 Washington Street is built as planned, fourplex, I'd like to know which one of you on the planning commission would like to live next door to it. I'm serious.
Sir, I don't, actually, I don't think that's an appropriate question as to ask someone what they would or would not live in. There are certain folks that, something that's very small, and I take a little offense to that because I live in a very small structure with my wife. So, I guess it would be a point of choice.
I guess I'm speaking about a driveway that used to be trees.
But that's not what you said.
Okay. I'm asking you if you would like to live next door when this, where Mr. Stamper lives, if this project was completed as planned. I think, I really think there's a double standard here. And it's, you talk about common sense. I mean, what about a duplex? Why does it have to be so large? I understand you look, you go along the street, there's only parking on one side of the street. You have eight parking places. People are going to come over to visit. Where are they going to park? If I could just, that, the project at the corner of Washington 4th Street is not what we're talking about tonight. I understand that the genesis of what that was...
I thought the zoning was incorporated.
It's for the whole city and for every type of zone from R1 to R2 to R3. So, that's what we're talking about is a citywide clarification and it's not specific to that project. That project will be coming back to the commission. So, in that respect, you certainly have a second bite at the apple on this and I think that your concerns, that would be the time to make your concerns known. All right, very good. I'll do it at that time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close this for the final time? Anyone like to come forward? Okay, Seena, and thank you. This is Calistoga and you should be able to say what you want to say. So, I will close the public hearing and I will, I guess, any other comments from commissioners? And if none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2018-17 recommending to the city council approval of zoning code amendments to clarify the applicability of lot area and dimension requirements in various zoning districts and to reformat certain chapters to improve their usability.
Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to H, matters initiated by commissioners. Do the commissioners have anything they'd like to say tonight? Very quiet. Okay, that's a good thing. Directors' report.
I would like to recommend to you that you cancel the October 10 planning commission meeting. I will be attending the statewide planning conference on that date and will be unable to staff the meeting and I would not want to throw our new staff member to the wolves.
Do we anticipate a meeting on the 24th?
Yes, definitely.
So, you don't want a baptism by fire?
Yeah.
For the new boy?
No, I'm only going to be around for three days before I go to the conference, so I don't think that'll be enough time to bring him up to speed.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is that it, men? Y'all done?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I guess that kind of does it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the 24th of October.
So moved.
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, have a good evening.